Tonight's District Five Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors Candidate Forum on AM 1450 and FM 102.7 KPMEL is brought to you by the Tuolumne County Farm Bureau and Nate's Tree Service.
The Tuolumne County Farm Bureau is hosting a Candidates Night Tuesday, February 6th, at the Elks Lodge in Sonora. It's your chance to see the candidates face to face in all three supervisors' races, as well as Sonora City Council. Tuolumne County and the city of Sonora are faced with critical decisions in 2024 and beyond, and you'll want to know where each candidate stands on a variety of issues. Doors open at 5:30 and Candidates Night begins at 6:00. For more information, call 209-522-7278.
Candidates Night, also brought to you by Nate's Tree Service. Tuolumne County and the city of Sonora are faced with critical decisions in 2024 and beyond. To find out where each candidate stands on a variety of issues, join us Tuesday, February 6th, at Elks Lodge in Sonora. This is your chance to see the candidates face to face in all three supervisors' races, as well as Sonora City Council. Doors open at 5:30 and Candidates Night begins at 6:00. For more information, call 209-522-7278.
Well, the March 5th primary election is just around the corner, and there are three Board of Supervisor races in Tuolumne County on the ballot and the Sonora City Council. Over the next consecutive nights, we are going to be airing Candidates Forums highlighting those races as a chance to hear straight from the candidates about issues facing the future of the county. I'm BJ Hanson, your moderator. We are going to start out tonight with the District Five Supervisor Race, featuring the incumbent Jaren Brandon and the challenger, Arthur Schmidt. How it's going to work is there will be three minutes for opening statements, a series of questions that each of the candidates will have a chance to answer, and then some closing statements. So we'll get things kicked off here with Jaren Brandon.
Awesome, BJ. Hey, and always a pleasure to be in here. As you mentioned, I'm the county supervisor for District Five, proudly representing Columbia, Jamestown, Tuttle Town stent, and the southwest portions of Tuolumne County. Been in there about three years. I'm a born and raised local, grew up on Willow Street and out in Marble Corey RV Park with my mom, son of a small business owner and a musician entertainer in town. And like so many people, grew up here, loved it, moved away, went to college, worked for a bit, and came back and found that a love of service that I really wanted to revisit and get involved. We had no shortage of issues in Tuolumne County when I started, because I think we had a lot of leaders that had talked about issues, but they walked by them. And coming in, we were losing the ability of people being able to, I think, build life here. We saw housing prices go crazy. We had seen a general decline in public safety. We had seen some progress, I think, in the areas of forest management, but a real lack of transparency, respect for the public, communication. And those became priorities that I ran on: housing, jobs, transparency, and restoring public safety within our community. And I'm really proud over that time to be, I think, the most experienced candidate in this race with the record of making accomplishments on these various areas. And everything from being able to address a lot of the deputy pay disparities. People probably don't realize quite how bad that was coming in. Finally giving them competitive compensation. We're about at zero vacancies now, I think, for Patrol, from a point where we weren't sure that day patrols could even continue on in 2021. We've cleared 160,000 acres of forest fuel treatments, reduced our risk, and then in areas like Columbia where now we've supplemented our fire service with a new Schedule A station that's coming in. Beyond that, I'm proud to have been waving my hands around about how much we need housing. We need to restart building within this community. We stopped that for 20 years. We're really moving in the direction of some of the most ambitious, I think, housing proposals our county's seen, and some billion dollars of various investments from resorts to biomass projects, looking to the future to bring good jobs here. All the while, I think, taking care of the small stuff. Looking at the sidewalk improvement grants in Jamestown, being able to help the kids at the elementary school program, working with behavioral health to have recovery services be better, and tackling the issue of homelessness as well. So I think it's been a really good year, or three years, and I'm asking voters for a second term to see this work through. I've always been a leader that leads with service. You know, I'm tough, a little bit too independent sometimes. I'm really proud of that, and I think standing for a second term, I'm going to be a leader that doesn't walk by problems, I'm going to solve them.
And Arthur Schmidt, opening statements.
All right. Thank you, BJ. Glad to be here. My name is Arthur Schmidt. I'm running for District Five Supervisor, which includes Jamestown, Columbia, and part of Sonora. I moved to Tuolumne County in 2007, purchased Sonora Grocery Outlet as a family-owned business. In April of 2022, I sold that business and retired after 40-plus years in the grocery business. But during those 15 years, I worked a lot with the city of Sonora, the city council, and other local businesses to help our communities strive. I was also a servant in our community, working with very, quite a few nonprofits, such as Habitat for Humanity, Lambert Center, Senior Center, 4-H, FFA, just to name a few. And I also spent four years on the civic advisory board at the hospital. So you may ask, why am I running for supervisor for District Five? Well, I feel we need more transparency at the local level. I feel the current board is fractured, and we have to understand not one supervisor can create change by themselves. I also know this community from the consumer level, and with my business and leadership background, I know I would be an asset to this community and to a board. So my long-term goals for District Five in Tuolumne County would be road maintenance, housing at all levels, public safety, and other more current issues such as affordable fire insurance, fire prevention, homelessness, and the need to look at our long-term disaster plans. So it's time for truth, logic, and a common sense approach to leadership. I would like you to vote, Schmidt, March 5th. Thank you.
Thank you both for those opening comments. And my first question is, you both have distinctly different backgrounds, one being a sitting supervisor and the other a longtime business owner. How would you argue that your individual backgrounds make you a better fit for this position? And we'll start with Arthur Schmidt on that question.
Well, like I mentioned, I spent 40 years in the grocery business. I spent the last 15 years here in Sonora, operating the Sonora Grocery Outlet. And running a business and being a supervisor, there's a lot of things that are similar. We still have similar issues with homeless. I still had similar issues with the state of California and what they like to push down and make our businesses do. So there's a lot of things that are real similar for me as a business owner, and to be able to bring my business, my budgeting, my planning, all that's really important for the Tuolumne County and the Board of Supervisor. So I think I would fit in well. Thank you.
Same question for Jaren Brandon. How would you argue that your individual background makes you a better fit for this position?
Well, it's not going to come as a surprise to anybody that I am one of the youngest supervisors in the state. Actually, when I was elected, I was the youngest at that time. And I think it's really important to have that perspective, because as somebody who grew up locally, I remember a lot of the challenges from being on Willow Street and seeing the SWAT team bust down the door of a meth house next door, the challenges of working in a small business when the bypass came in. And during that entire time, as somebody who actually watched the NewsHour, I was very interested in kind of how government worked, even as a child and a teen, didn't really know anything about the county. It was not communicative to me or to my father or to my family. And I think that brings a real perspective, growing up in the community, that's important. My mom worked at Railtown. My dad has been, introduced me to any number of kind of, you know, community events and the things that make it rich up here. Now, moving back to this area, and obviously being 32, I have a much younger professional experience behind me with this. I'm looking at this from the perspective of somebody that has moved back, not only was born here, but chose this community as my home, who is thinking about having a family, help me end up finding somebody, but when I do, having kids, and they're going to grow up here, and I want them to have a place to live. This is not, to me, a retirement gig. It's not a position of honor because I lived a really good life or anything like that. It's always been a working position and working for the people. It's so that they can build a life here, because that's what I would like to pass down to my family. I want them to have good schools, I want them to have parks, but I want them to be safe, afford a home, have a good job, and for the first time in a long time, maybe feel better about the next 10 years and not feel like it's going downhill. And I think we're getting there.
Next question, we'll stay with Jaren Brandon. It's in relation to business and economic development. What do you feel can be done to make areas around your district, specifically the business hubs like Columbia and Jamestown, more vibrant for locals and visitors?
Oh, that's such a good question. I think there is so much that we can do. The first thing we always push for, and I think this is a default and it's very important to me, is the local control element. We have to be able to, you know, I think, manage our own backyard and control that. It's very difficult with the state regulations, especially around a lot of environmental laws, construction, planning, bidding, contracting. What we need to do when it comes to economic development is first focus on our strengths. Now, Columbia and Jamestown, we are a beautiful part. I'm so lucky to represent that area, and I think we can build on that when it comes to tourism, especially with strategic partnerships, for example, through the California State Railroad Museum Foundation, among their board of directors. That's a key partner for Railtown, protecting visit to Tuolumne, when tourists are one of the major economic factors supporting both of those areas. Now, looking broader, how do we be able to attract new industries here, support small business, and expand existing businesses? I'm very proud to have a lot of support from chambers of commerce, including, for example, Gary Wilson, members of the county chamber, major employers such as Sierra Pacific Industries, Sierra Rail, and Chicken Ranch Rancheria that have endorsed me. I think they have really great plans for the area. But also looking at, you know, we don't create jobs. We create an environment that is conducive to job creation. And so during my term, a lot of it, even though not focused just on District Five, is how do we make it easier to build housing? How do we bring families in here, bring workers in here, remove a lot of the regulations that make that harder, and make this a place that people want to invest? I think one last thing to consider, too, is when you look at these major industries, they take into account things like public safety, fire insurance, all of these. We've made massive progress on these issues. We're still fighting, and we're going to keep fighting.
Same question for Arthur Schmidt on the topic of business and economic development. What do you feel can be done to make District Five specifically, in the business hubs like Columbia and Jamestown, more vibrant for locals and visitors?
Well, great. Yeah, as a businessman, my business was in Sonora, obviously not in Jamestown or Columbia, but a lot of the issues, we all, all businesses have a lot of the same issues. The issues that businesses have is getting qualified help, getting the housing for that, and having people that are interested in growing in Tuolumne County. Tuolumne County hasn't really grown that much in the last three decades. We've been around 50,000 people, 55,000 people. So, you know, we need to be able to have the infrastructure for the housing, for the employees, and for the businesses to grow. We lead in tourism, and we can't forget that. Tourism is probably our biggest opportunity for businesses to grow. So with the parks, Railtown and Columbia State Parks, they drive a lot of tourism to our economy, and a lot of those businesses, not necessarily just in the park in Columbia, but also the outskirts of the park, it's really important to help those businesses strive. The one thing, you know, ask a business, what can we do for you? And take the park, for example, in Columbia, if we could get people to stay an extra day, the tourism, what would that do for the tourism of Tuolumne County? It would be huge. So we need to look at ways, and our business needs to look at ways, to get people to stay an extra day, then the tourism will help push that. Thank you.
Next question is regards to rising homelessness. In District Five, the Rahide Road Bridge has issues with homelessness. The Miners Hotel is being purchased for homelessness efforts. There was talk about utilizing the Jamestown mine property. And this question for Arthur Schmidt, how would you grade the county's overall efforts to this point to address homelessness?
Well, there's a lot of factors that go into it. There's a lot of stuff that's pushed down from the state. I don't give them that high of a grade. We really have to solve the, the part of the homeless issue that's in everybody's mind, what everybody sees. And that's the law enforcement part, the part where you see the people walking down the street, you see the people living under the bridge at the Rahide. And, you know, we put a sign up out there at the Rahide Bridge. What did that do? Nothing. Says no parking, no camping, no littering, but there's no teeth in that sign. There's no way to keep people out of there. So what are we telling people? I mean, we need to be able to have ordinances, have laws that we can enforce, and I think we need to work towards that. And that should have come first. The housing, buying all these properties for the homeless, you know, that should have been the second part. We should have done the ordinances, the clean and clear policies first. So next year, we've done a lot for homeless the last couple of years, so we need to dashboard the progress of the homeless. We need to see what we have done already, how is that working out? You know, we can't continue to buy homes and do stuff. Let's slow down a little bit. Let's see how the clean and clear works. Let's see how the camping works. Let's see how cleaning up the Rahide Bridge works. Let's do these things so that the public understands that there is true progress.
Jaren Brandon, same question to you. How would you grade the county's overall efforts to this point to address homelessness?
Yeah, I'd give it a B. And homelessness is a very complex issue. I've always viewed this as a three-legged stool. You have to have recovery, you have to have housing options, and you have to have enforcement. The reason being is you have to protect public safety, but recovery is what actually gets people back on their feet or prevents them from becoming chronically homeless. If you give somebody drug treatment, but you send them back to a camp full of drugs, they're not going to get better. You have to really braid that system. And what we saw, I think, was a failure of leadership at the local level for a very long time, saying that, you know, this is not our role, this is not our job to address this, and it got worse and worse and worse. We saw areas like Camp Hope develop over the 10 years prior to me taking the board to become a place where fire and crime and drugs were openly peddled. It was a completely lawless area. And I think, actually, I would be in agreement that enforcement is the number one priority, and coming to the board, that was where the focus was. It's not where always the articles get written, but where we had ended proactive patrols for the sheriff's office and put immense stress on our deputies, we immediately came in with historic raises, more than they've ever received before, to address these pay disparities. And immediately, the next year did exactly the same thing. Now, we're at zero vacancies within Patrol because of those investments. We've invested also in social workers to do housing placements, and we've reduced the clinician vacancy rate. Now, we have these housing proposals. We've done it at zero local cost. There is backup on making sure that these are financially sustainable, and that's at top of mind. But I think for the first time in a very long time, we actually have that three-legged stool together, which is really important. I know that since starting about 2017, the number of homeless was 250, and 480 in about 2019. Now we're at about 280, so I think we're going to keep making progress.
Jaren Brandon, staying with you for the next question. District Five has a major project coming online, of course, the Chicken Ranch Casino Resort. There's going to be jobs opening up. People are going to want to live close to where they work. That's kind of the backdrop for my next question. How do you think the county should address the lack and demand for housing?
We have to put it up at number one. Actually, we're just finishing up a board priority session that I'm proud, after three years. And I think this is widely agreed on. We stopped building. In fact, we became very antagonistic towards builders, that development was something to be feared, something evil. And people have to have a place to live. I know there are so many people my age, and seniors are in that same boat, too. They cannot afford a place here. They can't even envision, without inheriting a house, how they're going to live in this community, even well-employed people. I ran on housing my first time. It's a terrible issue, BJ. It takes more than three years to solve. But since that point, we have completely rebuilt the Title 17 planning ordinances. We brought in tens of millions of dollars for fire hardening and fixing up manufactured homes to retain our current stock. We're doing innovative stuff like 3D concrete printed houses. We are working with utility partners to try and bring funding to them, because you've got to pipe it to be able to build it. We're looking at land use and zoning, and in all ways trying to restore our reputation as a good place to build. There's so much more work to do on this, and I can say that I have dedicated thousands of hours to focus not on what the state is doing to make this harder, and we know that they've done a lot of things in that area, but to focus on what we can do locally. And I'll tell you, it's not easy, it's not simple, but there are tons of things that are within our power. We're finally addressing that with some of the capacity investments we've made. And in addition to the private sector market, we're looking at two affordable housing projects. We have these transitional sites as well. We're doing housing navigation in a very broad sense. We're putting people back under roofs, and we're trying to bring back the builders. And I'm very proud to have the support of many developers, business folks who need to hire Chicken Ranch, as well as the president of the Building Industries Association.
And Arthur Schmidt, your thoughts on addressing the homeless, or not the housing issue in Tuolumne County?
Well, like I mentioned in my opening statement, you know, I'm for all housing. You know, when you're out there and you're, you know, a lot of people say, we need low-income housing, we need low-income housing. We need that, for sure. But all housing, because if you build a $700,000, $800,000 house, who's going to move into that? Somebody that's lower on the, everybody wants to upgrade. So one of those houses is going to move like five, six, eight people into new housing. And when you do that, all those places get remodeled, all those places change and paint and clean, and all that creates jobs. So we need all kinds of housing. And we need to get our local builders building back in our county on my campaign trail. That's all I hear from all these local builders. I don't want to deal with Tuolumne County. I'll go to Mariposa, I'll go to Calveras. So we got to bridge that gap. We got to have an understanding of why these builders are going out of the county. Is it the, is it our building department? Is it, is the, are restrictions on building? But we really need the infrastructure for building also, you know? We need the water, we need the sewer. We need to work with these other TUD and the others and try to get the infrastructure so we can build more. Infrastructure is probably, and getting the builders back in Tuolumne County are probably the two biggest things, hurdles, that we have right now. So we need to move building, housing back to the top, yes, and get our builders back home.
Arthur Schmidt, I'll stay with you for this next question. A lot of times, county supervisors travel to various parts of the state and country to take part in meetings with groups and organizations that have influence on issues that impact the county. Sometimes supervisors sit on state and regional boards that require travel. In a general sense, do you feel that this is a good use of time and county dollars?
Yeah, I think we all, you know, we need to work with the state, we need to work with the federal governments, and mainly to push our values up. What do we want at our local level? If we don't meet with the state, we don't do these things, the state doesn't know. And we need to push up what we are, what the locals here are interested in and what our values are. So the only way to do that is get involved with those groups, get involved with the state officials and the federal officials, and work towards climbing and making Tuolumne County a better place to live and work. You know, that's what we all want. And the state of California has a lot of money, and we need to go after that. So, thank you.
And Jaren Brandon, same question for you.
Absolutely. I think you got to go where the decisions are made. And as a rural county, you know, and that's not to beat down at all, we are 52,000, 53,000 people. We're up in the mountains. We know that a lot of the state is not listening to us. You have to go build a coalition of people to speak with a much stronger voice. And over the past three years, and this is not me, I think, actually, our board and our staff with a renewed energy have really gone out to build these connections with groups and advocate from being on the group, targeting fire insurance, trying to talk to the insurance commissioner into some sense on that, talking to the legislature, going down to Sacramento. Now, I myself serve on a broadband advocacy committee where I had the opportunity to lobby some senators who had been a huge ally and said, how can we help? We got to explain what they needed to do for rural areas like ours with some of the BEAD funding as well. So I am in support of it. And a little secret about me, I'm kind of notoriously thrifty with it, and I sleep in the back of my truck at a lot of these things. Reason is, is because we need to put ourselves out there, and we have limited funds. I'm really proud to not just talk to, I think, our own reps who get it. Our reps get it up here, they really do. We teach them, they work with us. We have to reach the people that are the power centers in the state and make our arguments and our priorities somewhat to their terms, so they see that, you know what, when you talk about conservation, environmentalism, but all the forests are burning down, what we're talking about with increasing the pace and scale of timber operations is conservation. It's also jobs and industry here. And so both of those can coexist and rebuild a lot of that harm. So I'm proud to be on, again, the Rail Museum Foundation. I work with the UC Ag and Natural Resource Presidential Advisory Committee Group, a vice chair for the Technology and Telecommunications Group for the National County Association, and I've amended the legislative platforms for the County Association several times to fight for our interests.
Jaren Brandon, one of the recent hot-button issues, Tuolumne County is moving toward the possible creation of a tobacco license that would be levied on local tobacco suppliers in an effort to increase enforcement efforts to potentially reduce illegal sales to youth. You were the lone vote initially against that when it came up to the Board of Supervisors, so I'm curious both of your opinions on that issue, starting with Jaren Brandon.
Sure. I mean, I think it just goes back to a philosophy. There are a billion issues that we could solve, but I'm not in the business of trying to just solve hypothetical problems. It's got to be really overwhelming when we're stepping in to anything the businesses are doing. And with what brought, was brought forward, and we see a state that is making a billion dollars in various excise taxes for this, has certain amounts slated for enforcement as well, and should be doing it, the same as bars have to go through the ABC process, and to create a redundant bureaucratic oversight group to go to some of these local businesses, and whether it's 40 bucks or 400 bucks, make them jump through more hoops without a compelling reason, and especially without the data to show that this is really where, let's say, kids are getting it. There's already a pretty severe fine system in place for that. And we live in, I think, an era where, let's say we get some older sibling and that, the best thing we can do is teach kids to make better choices, work with the business owners to do better, but to add just another level of checks and bureaucracy, I think that's not where we need to be at. I think a closing point on that to the broader thing is sometimes you got to not be afraid to be the only vote. A lot of times, I have been the only vote. And while I think the board has really come together as a team, we're operating stronger. I was elected as vice chair recently. Something that is important to reflect is, you got to know what you stand for. And I stand for, unless there is a really compelling reason, we are there to make people's lives easier and help folks, not harder.
And Arthur Schmidt, same question to you. Your opinions on potentially Tuolumne County creating that tobacco license?
Well, as a businessman, I know there's a lot of tax and stuff going into the product when you purchase that. So you're already, you're already taxed for the same purpose, for education and enforcement of keeping it away from the kids. And I'm all for that. We should have that locally, the education and enforcement to help keep kids away from vaping and cigarettes, 100%. But are we going after those dollars? The state is taxing on the product when you purchase it. Are we getting those dollars funneled down from the state to our local health departments? And are they using those funds for the education and the enforcement of tobacco use? So if I was sitting on the board, I would push it back and say, hey, what are those dollars that are already being forced down? If those dollars aren't enough, then we have a conversation. Are we not getting those dollars? Well, that's the issue. We need to go after those dollars. So that... We need to go after those dollars so that we get the dollars forced down from the state and we use them properly for the intent of those dollars. So it's two-pronged, you know? Being a businessman and knowing that we get taxed for certain things already and then locally, we want to tax you again, we really have to get in the weeds of the issues and make sure that it makes sense. It is important to keep our kids away from tobacco, I will say that.
And we need to take a quick break. Tonight's Toolumee County District Five Candidate Forum is brought to you by Toolumee County Farm Bureau and Nate's Tree Service.
The Toolumee County Farm Bureau is hosting a Candidates Night Tuesday, February 6th at the Elks Lodge in Sonora. It's your chance to see the candidates face to face in all three supervisors races as well as Sonora City Council. Toolumee County and the city of Sonora are faced with critical decisions in 2024 and beyond, and you'll want to know where each candidate stands on a variety of issues. Doors open at 5:30 and Candidates Night begins at 6:00. For more information, call 209-522-7278.
Candidates Night, also brought to you by Nate's Tree Service. Toolumee County and the city of Sonora are faced with critical decisions in 2024 and beyond. To find out where each candidate stands on a variety of issues, join us Tuesday, February 6th at Elks Lodge in Sonora. This is your chance to see the candidates face to face in all three supervisors races as well as Sonora City Council. Doors open at 5:30 and Candidates Night begins at 6:00. For more information, call 209-522-7278.
Arthur Schmidt, my next question is about fire services. There are a lot of questions about how Toolumee County is going to fund fire protection over the coming years, especially in the face of dwindling budget revenues and grant money drying up. How do you feel the county can keep those services going at the level that they need to be?
Well, we just get to have to work with Cal Fire and pursue all the ways we can to make it profitable and streamline it and be able to serve the community in the ways that we need to serve the community. And what can we do as homeowners to help prevent forest fires, house fires, you know, those things? So are we doing our brushing? Are we hardening our homes? Are we, you know, paying attention to our smoke detectors? Are we dealing all these really little things that add up to really big things so that, that we can help our fire departments prosper and that we do have them when we need them? Everything goes up and we have to be creative on ways to fund our public services. There, there, there's no other way around it. So as a community, what can we do? We need to do. And then we need to make sure we have the funding so that we do have the fire protection that Toolumee County deserves. Thank you.
And Jaren Brandon, over to you.
Absolutely. And I think this is the case over and over is, you know, similar priorities in this. And yet I think right now we are at a pinnacle of, of fire safety. Now, that sounds odd because of course we have a lot more work to do, but when it comes to forest fuel acres treated, to the biomass and green hydrogen plants coming in, the brushing we've been doing, the fire service expansion, we're way more safer today than we were three years ago. And certainly I think this is a shared priority by our county leaders over generations, ever since the Rim Fire. We got the message, we've worked, aside from any political differences, we have all contributed to that and I think we, we've really done our part with it. But as far as the sustainability of that service, you know, I've got a hard line in the sand. We can't go back to being unprotected and cutting fire stations or leaving areas like Columbia out to where a fire district can't maintain service. We say, ah, well, you gotta go figure it out yourself. Fire doesn't care about district boundaries, doesn't care about where the money's coming from. It is going to potentially consume a community and we have to think about it that way. So the investments that we've made to get grants to start up some of these services have been really key and I think we're talking about ongoing operations and it's a hard conversation. I've never been afraid to have that. So whether we are looking at economic development projects that I can name to bring in hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars of revenue, looking at a dedicated fire measure, which I think we need to explore, and that's a hard conversation. The community facilities districts proposals or anything like that, I've been the one to propose these revenue options and I believe we have a plan that moving forward, we'll make sure. And I'm really proud to announce here, this is the first time, actually I got the call earlier today, that I've been announced by Cal Fire Local 2881 as the candidate in this race that has the support of our fire services.
Next question, we'll stay with Jaren Brandon. It seems like every few years discussion comes up at the Board of Supervisors about whether marijuana dispensaries should be allowed in the unincorporated parts of the county. If that comes up again during the next four years, what is your stance on, on that issue?
Yeah, and you know, we, we talked about this today. I'm always just going to be candid with where my position is on it. I think where you have a free market that competes with an illicit market and trying to not invade what type of products are the morality police of what people should sell, that's, that's where I'm at with it. And it has the co-benefit of, as we've seen with the city, now we've had some city leaders get up and say, you know, we don't really like cannabis, da, 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 but you know, now that we have it, we're not going to go back. It's able to fund critical public services like roads, like public safety, like fire, but it was never really a main point. So I'll tell you BJ, if it came to the board, I would support the idea and I would do so, I think, in a very thoughtful and logical way. When we had this come up as a medical dispensary facility and put aside whether we wanted or didn't want it, it was happening. Actually Supervisor Kirk and I were in complete agreement about how to move forward because we all wanted to be accountable, not to go to kids, to go be safe and to be a community benefit, not a nuisance. But we have larger fish to fry and I'm okay with that. What we need to have are the harder conversations about revenue in the long term from the sales tax, economic development revenue, those types of things. So I'm always willing to share my opinion. Sometimes it is unpopular. That's one of those ones that I thought it'd be fair to let voters decide. Whatever your opinions are on that though, it's focused on the long-term picture, what is the community we're building and where does that money go to? And what is the role of government, you know, to come in and tell people what they really can and can't sell interfering in that life? I, I just don't see that either as a county priority.
And Arthur Schmidt, where do you stand on the issue of potential marijuana dispensaries in the unincorporated parts of the county?
Well, it, it's a really touchy subject, you know? We, we have the ability to maybe some, some gain from it. It's, it's a voter's decision in my mind of the voters have to decide whether they feel it's important to have in our county. And right, right now there's all kinds of, of data and stuff where it really destroys counties and it tears them up and tears up cities. So we, we need to look at the data that's out there for these counties and cities that have done it. And is there, is there a plus gain? Has there been enough gain for it? Has there been too much crime, too much availability to, to, for the children to get a hold of it? We need to really look into that. And, and the, the new state pushed down medical marijuana delivery thing that was just pushed down this, the first of this year, you know, that's a little, that's, that's different. That's like having medical marijuana being able to be delivered to your house. Well, I, I don't think we need warehouses in Groveland and Twainhart and Jamestown to have all this medical marijuana delivered to these houses. I, I don't see the need for that. There's so many ways to get medical marijuana right now. So yeah, the state says you cannot say you, you, you can't allow it, but, but we don't need 1,500 square foot warehouses all over the county storing marijuana to be delivered just for medical marijuana use. It's, I, I don't think that's a need. There is so much opportunity to get marijuana right now.
Arthur Schmidt, next question is about just PG&E outages have been a big issue in Toolumee County as well as District Five. As a supervisor, what do you feel would be the best strategy to address that issue with PG&E?
Well, I went through it as a business owner, you know? P S P S, it, it was devastating to some businesses, you know? You have all your product, you have all the, the loss in sales, you know, it's, it's really hard. We have to focus on getting PG&E to update their poles, to update their, their fire hazard problems with the lines so that this doesn't happen as much, you know? It, it is too, it's, it's just too much pressure put on our businesses and our everyone else in the county. You lose everything out of your house when the power goes out for too long, you know? You have people that have special needs. So we need to stay on top of PG&E. We need to continue to work with them to make it a priority, to reduce the number of power outages for Toolumee County. There's no other way around it. It's pressure. You have to keep putting pressure on PG&E to get the job done correctly. Thank you.
Jaren Brandon, same question.
Oh heck yeah, I love this one. Cause I, I got to sit in the room and I'm always before I might say something mean. The, the local folks we work with, they're really great. You know, they run the grid, they, they serve us and, and don't get mad at them. They are not at fault for the undertakings of this monolithic monopoly that we have in this area. Sitting in a meeting with PG&E to let them know that even in my own house, and Columbia Grid's one of the worst, Phoenix Lake, Columbia Grid, Groveland, my power shut off something like 22 times in two months. And how do you do economic development in those conditions? And don't come in saying, we're going to be upgrading a couple of things as a gift. That's deferred maintenance, that's decades and decades of deferred maintenance for a utility monopoly that should have been taken care of it, that we've seen in Paradise. It's caused, I think they're on criminal probation for 84 deaths in that. And reading through and visiting Paradise, you see the, the scale of what we're talking about. Now it's hard because we don't have all the traditional tools to address it. What we do have is being able to take back control of some of our power purchasing such as the Community Choice Aggregator Programs, being able to build more alternative energy within the community and looking at GRIP grants, things that are for energy resiliency at the federal level to partner with them. I think that's going to be really important, but shoot, if they won't fix up what they need to, let's sue them.
You know, we're going to move over to questions from the community. We opened it up earlier to the community if anybody had questions that they, they wanted to ask and we're, we're going to keep rolling.
That's good. I got to be right here?
Down the hall. All right, we're going to go to Arthur Schmidt for this question from the community. Okay, so this is in regards to, it was a question from Becky and her question is, she's a Jamestown resident and her question is about green waste. Cans can be provided for customers of waste management. She says, my understanding is that this is tied up with several things, lack of trucks and in agreement with the county, I see that Angels Camp has green waste cans, most communities have this provision. As an elderly voter, she, she says, I can't unload my truck with green waste and take it to the slash pile or pay someone to haul it away. Also don't want to wait several years to have this sorted out. I may not have several years and the inconvenience is intolerable, she says. So can anything be done on the topic of green waste? She wants to know.
Well, yeah, you know, if, if that's something that our community really wants and then it's our job to go to waste management and say, hey, you know, this is a service that our community is wanting and maybe willing to pay for. So how can we add this in? And, and what, are you able to add this in, you know? Things change all the time. People's needs change, people's ideas change. So we, you know, we just have to look into these different ways to get rid of waste and, and pursue them and see if it's really a doable thing. The cost, well, maybe it would cost more than what somebody would really want to pay. You know, everything boils down to the cost, you know? We can have a lot of great services out there, you know, but what will it cost for a small community? You have to remember, we're a rural community of 55,000 people and some of the services that you have in maybe the Bay Area or the Valley, they, they're really challenging to bring those services up to a small community and they, they get expensive. But that doesn't mean we can't research it. That doesn't mean we can't go to waste management and say, this may be something that could be a profitable thing for, for the waste management. So it's just a matter of, of bringing the ideas up and doing the research and putting the time in and looking at ways to improve the way we get rid of trash locally. Thank you.
And I'm gonna have to skip over Supervisor Brandon on that question. He had to step out for just a second, so out of fairness to everybody, I'm going to go with Arthur Schmidt for the next question. And this was submitted from Linda. She wants to know, as a paid elected official representing your district, how do you plan to keep residents in the county informed on what you're doing and what's going on with county government?
Well, if you were a customer and employee at my store, you'll, you'll understand that I gave 110%. I was there, I, I worked 60, 80 hours a week. I gave back to the community. I cared about what my customers thought, you know? I was there, I was available and I will do the same. This will be a full-time job for me. This is, this is what I want to continue doing. I have a passion, I think I, I can help people and I like talking to people. So I would be out there, you know? I would be available anytime for, for a lunch, for a meeting, for any, anyone, any public, even out of my district to wants to talk about issues that they have. I would be available just like I was in my business. Thank you.
And Jaren Brandon, same question, as a paid elected official representing your district, how do you plan to keep residents informed on what you're doing and what's going on with county government?
Well, isn't everybody tired of being spammed with all those posts on Facebook? I, I'm really proud that I think when I first ran, I wanted to be the most communicative supervisor we've ever had. And you know, I want to draw a kind of a comparison here is that, you know, government is, is not like a grocery store. You do not have your constituents coming in, so you, you can sit up in the office and do good work. And having people that reach out to you that come into the office and you work with them, that is a real bare minimum. When you're representing 12,000 people who are busy, who have lives that they're leading, families they're raising, and you need to keep them informed, it really does take a lot of work and it's not easy. You can't just go put a, a press release or a bulletin up on a bulletin board somewhere and say, okay, you know, done job. You have to reach people where they're at. And so, you know, beyond, I think, opportunities like my motherload offers us to be able to speak to the community, you know, being active on social media across multiple platforms and speaking up candidly in meetings, being part of community events. You'd be surprised, I get questions about potholes while I end up being the Easter Bunny out in Columbia. I mean, I wear these yellow hats so that people can identify me and ask questions and not feel like they're, they're imposing on my time. And so I think it's really important when you judge, I've got three years plus the campaign before of being an extremely accessible, you know, I bet you if you took out your phone right now and you sent me a text, 770-5084, you'd get right to me and I would be happy to talk to you about any issues on your mind. If you needed help, you know, you can access me. If you wanted to hear what I was working on, you could go to my Facebook. Now, we might not know what's promised kind of on the other side in general, but you know what you get with me and you get somebody who is accessible, who is transparent and who is communicative. And that's really important in rebuilding trust in government.
Final question I have for both of you tonight, and I'll start with Jaren Brandon. Any issue that I haven't asked you about related to county government during this forum that's on your radar that you feel needs to be addressed or changed?
Yeah, I think, that's a good one. There, there's a lot of really worthwhile, I call them great, great problems, right? They're, they're such worthwhile problems to work on and they're all just about impossible. I'm really proud when it comes to, I think, infrastructure investments is one thing we haven't talked about a lot. And moving forward, these revenue discussions about how do we create an environment conducive to business? There's a lot of approaches to it, but I know if you live in Jamestown and you've walked over those sidewalks and you see the lips there that, because the trees were planted badly 20 years ago when nobody thought to fix it, we've just been tripping over and dealing with the lawsuits. Or you look at the park that needed upgrades or even rebuilding the ordinance that is coming up in about two weeks to remove the encampment at Rockhide Bridge, protect that, move the new bridge of realignment forward. I think what I would highlight is that when we've had money, we've had time and attention, when we've hired staff, it's almost always been from meat and potato issues. It's been to bring in broadband, it's been to fix sidewalks, spend more money into roads in the last three years than the last 10. It's been moving transportation, infrastructure projects forward and not forgetting about fixing up the tree barrels and the tree barrels and the trees there too. So it's the small things and the big things. You have to be able to balance that as a public servant, because even the small stuff tends to accumulate and it may be the biggest thing that somebody faces. And even if you've got your big kind of highfalutin ideas at the county of the stuff that you think is really cool, it's so important to make sure you don't forget residents on Shell Road or or that business that's having a tripping hazard in front. So that's, that's what I would highlight, BJ. It's balancing the big stuff and the small stuff.
Arthur Schmidt, same question. Any issue that I haven't asked you about tonight that's on your radar that feels you feel that you should be be addressed by county government?
Well, we haven't talked about roads. Roads, roads, Toolumee Road, you know, it's a disaster. You know, when when we do something, you know, we need to make sure that it's quality work. And yeah, they're working on it. Yeah, they're getting, hopefully going to get it figured out. But, you know, roads is like the worst thing and it's hard and it's been going on for decades. And we have over 900 miles of roads in Toolumee County. We have, we need to go to the state. Yeah, the state of California's got the worst roads in the United States. Toolumee County has the worst roads in in California. So that kind of tells you where we're at. So we need to go to the state and push and push and say, hey, you say we have the worst roads. Help us with that. How can we get more funding? Show them what our tourism is like. We have tons of tourism going through on our roads and through our county, day after day after day. It's not us, just us, 50,000 people driving up and down our roads, you know, tourism, we need more of that gas tax. We need a bigger piece of the roads money to put to our local roads. And and we need to go claw and fighting our way up to the state level and push for more and more money. You know, it's just, we got to continue to do that. Everybody says, oh, yeah, we do it, we, you know, we're just stuck. And no, that's not a good enough answer. We have to go to the state and show them why we need more money forced down to roads. And we have good reasons. And we need to continue to force that up. Thank you.
Well, thank both of you for answering all the questions this evening. It's, I think it's important discourse as we head up to the March 5 primary election. It's time for some closing comments. Since I started with Jaren Brandon at the beginning, I'm going to allow Arthur Schmidt the chance to go first.
Yeah, well, thank you. You know, I just want to tell you, basically, you know, I'm all for advocating local values moved up to the state level. I've said that a few times. I'm for small government, big freedoms, individual rights. And, you know, I'm, I'm going to be out there working my butt off for everybody. When I moved here in 2007 and purchased this Sonora Grocery Outlet, I had that store for 15 years. And I tripled the sales, tripled the sales in that store in 15 years. How did I do that? By getting out in the community, by getting and helping, by listening to my customers and understanding what people really need and want. And that's what we need to do in Toolumee County. We have to understand what the needs and wants are for Toolumee County residents and District Five, especially for me. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of hard work and I'm ready for it. And I feel like with my background and what I was able to accomplish in my business, I can roll forward and do a lot of those same things and help Toolumee County immensely. So I look for your vote on March 5. Thank you for all the continued support during my campaign. And I truly would be honored to be supervisor for District Five 2025. Thank you.
And Jaren Brandon, closing comments?
Absolutely. You had great wine selection, too. I gotta say that. I have nothing but respect for my opponent and I just wanted to lead with that. And I appreciate you stepping up. I think it's important to have competitive elections and and that we're having a marketplace of ideas. And I think, at least here, we've shared a lot of similar positions fundamentally on what we face. I think the big difference in this race is you have a incumbent who has really worked on these issues, who prioritized them and made progress. Not just progress, but really historic levels. I mean, going from some of the lowest funded deputies in the entire city or county area, region, to now zero vacancies and proactive patrols coming back, to seeing fire service for the first time in decades expanded, including into Columbia, you know, looking at massive road investments, which I agree, haven't fixed the issue, and yet pulling forward, you know, I'm a coalition builder and proud to bring together disparate groups to see that we're all one community and we have to address that and to have a plan to actually fix roads into the long term. And I'm very proud to be the only local candidate in this race, the only independent candidate in this race. And I don't have to have my materials and that because I know what I've been working for and what I've been fighting for as your servant for the last three years. We've made a lot of progress on these issues and I'm asking for a second term to see it through, not because this is a good job. I'll tell you, the pay and the working hours, this runs you haggard. You have to, you have to love what you do and the people that you serve and the community that you represent. And I do. I love being a part of it. I love fighting for it and I love giving everything that I have to it. I ask for everybody's support in March and I really appreciate the time, BJ. Thank you here. And I wanted to close out to to thank all the staff at the county, that without them, we set priorities, we set the vision and the direction. Sometimes we're a pain to deal with up on the board. They they have to handle a lot. And all these achievements we've talked about, nothing was done by one person. It was always done by a team. And that's, that's really where a lot of the true credit goes.
I thank both of you for coming on tonight. We've been hearing from Jaren Brandon and Arthur Schmidt, the two candidates for the District Five Toolumee County Board of Supervisor seat. It is the first of four candidate forums that we will be airing over consecutive nights. Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, you can hear from the District Four candidates, Steve Greifer and Catherine Sari. Thursday will be District One with Tanya Karstner, Matt Hawkins, Mike Holland, and Mark Plummer. Then coming up Friday will be the Sonora City Council candidates, Darren Dues, Beth Levine, Stephen Opie, and Ann Seggerstrom. If you missed any of today's District Five Forum, you can find it in its entirety on MyMotherlode.com. We'll see you back tomorrow night.
The Toolumee County Farm Bureau is hosting a Candidates Night Tuesday, February 6 at the Elks Lodge in Sonora. It's your chance to see the candidates face to face in all three supervisors' races, as well as Sonora City Council. Toolumee County and the city of Sonora are faced with critical decisions in 2024 and beyond, and you'll want to know where each candidate stands on a variety of issues. Doors open at 5:30 and Candidates Night begins at 6. For more information, call 209-522-7278.
Candidates Night also brought to you by Nate's Tree Service. Toolumee County and the city of Sonora are faced with critical decisions in 2024 and beyond. To find out where each candidate stands on a variety of issues, join us Tuesday, February 6 at Elks Lodge in Sonora. This is your chance to see the candidates face to face in all three supervisors' races, as well as Sonora City Council. Doors open at 5:30 and Candidates Night begins at 6. For more information, call 209-522-7278.